Okay, with that, we'll start the meeting. Welcome to the regular council meeting. The date is December tenth. The time is seven oh two. And we'll call meetings order. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda? Hey, a second or? Any amendments, changes? Oh, okay. Call the question all in favor.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we'll move right to public participation. Anyone in the gallery like to get up and speak? No? Okay, we'll go online if there's anyone online. Crystal? No? Okay.
Sure, sorry, sorry. My, uh, my car, so it's a bit dark. Am I free to address counsel?
Yes, go ahead.
So I just had two, uh, two comments, um, two issues I wanted to just provide some comments on. And I wanted to thank staff, and particularly the delegation for helping us manage our wildlife and our attractants. Opening up the works yard Friday mornings and Saturdays has certainly been a great option. And it's good that we have that kind of volunteer spirit and alignment with staff. So certainly appreciate that. The second piece, I was wondering if counsel will at any point talk a bit about this provincial hearing program? It sounds like it's a hundred percent grant funded and might help us with some of our water conservation efforts during the summer months. And that's really all I had to ask. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Uh, do we have the delegation on Norman Rogers?
That's me.
Okay, you can approach a podium and. Thank you.
I am Norma Rogers and presenting to council as a member of the Bear Smart Committee. I'm a twenty-nine-year resident with a history as volunteer bear advocate and eight-year chair of the previous Bear Smart Committee. I am announcing that I will be taking over as chair of the Bear Smart Committee in twenty twenty-five. Counselor Abbott will continue as the committee's liaison with council administration and conservation officers. Please enter. Counselor Abbott will continue as the committee's liaison with council administration and conservation officers. I will add chair to my titles of secretary communications and to my titles of secretary and communications. Other than title changes, we will continue as before, since all members contribute ideas and work on education. During twenty twenty-four, the Bear Smart Committee educated residents at the March Fair Memorial, May Bird Friendly Event, and July First Celebrations. We had four meetings, included bear safety information in every village update during bear season, and created a bear information brochure so our bylaw officer could distribute. As chair, I plan to continue our focus on education in schools, in the village update, and brochures sent to residents, as well as outreach at village events. The Bear Smart Committee's mandate has always been to reduce human-bear conflict for the safety of residents and bears. Bear Smart Committee volunteers are knowledgeable bear advocates committed to follow Bear Smart principles and maintain our community status. The Conservation Officer Service, or COS, monitors Bear Smart communities every five years. This past April, retired COS Inspector Caravetta interviewed CAO Blackwell and myself as part of our Bear Smart review. My hour-long interview concluded with his suggestion that I facilitate a working group that included the COS, council, administration, bylaws, and the Bear Smart Committee. Inspector Gravel of the COS had suggested this concept to Counselor Abbott in an earlier discussion. As a result, we had two bear working group meetings and developed more effective communication between the COS, Lions Bay Bylaw Officer, and CAO. Our initial bear working group included me, Counselor Abbott, CAO Blackwell, and Inspector Gravel. During the meeting, Inspector Gravel disclosed that Mayor Berry criticized Bear Smart and forwarded residents complaints to him. Then I received a series of emails relating to Bear Smart between the COS, ministry, Mayor Berry, Counselor Broton, and Lions Bay residents, obtained by another person through the F- uh, Freedom of Information process. The emails confirmed Inspector Gravel's disclosure during our working group meeting that Mayor Berry criticized Bear Smart to the COS. On August second, twenty twenty-three, Inspector Gravel wrote to CFO Miller, Mayor Berry, Works Manager Bure, that the COS received complaints about the Lions Bay Bear Smart. Mayor Berry and Inspector Gravel had a phone conversation referenced in an August fourth email when Mayor Berry thanked Inspector Gravel for his call and offer to attend council. Mayor Berry also included some negative Facebook posts about Bear Smart. On August fifth, Mayor Berry forwarded a concerned resident's email to Inspector Gravel. Quote, "To once again keep you apprised how Lions Bay residents are getting confused and mixed messages." The resident's email included incorrect assertions that the Bear Smart Committee was blocking the COS and calling them killers, and that bears are, quote, "having two cubs a year," unquote. On August seventh, Counselor Broton wrote to Inspector Gravel and Mayor Berry, quote, "I look forward to you joining us in September to clarify best practices with bears and to see if it is possible to work together with our self-appointed Bear Smart group who residents are increasingly concerned about their approach, mandate, and power."
Right.
Power? Seriously? Counselor Broton and Mayor Berry were communicating with the COS about the Bear Smart Committee and arranging a COS delegation to council without advising the chair of our committee, Counselor Abbott. On September fourteenth, Mayor Berry emailed Inspector Gravel and copied Counselor Abbott and council to thank Inspector Gravel for accepting his invitation to speak at the September fifth council meeting. He continued, quote, "Unfortunately, the misinformation trespassing on private property and unnecessary censorship has resulted in a mistrust of Bear Smart. The following are just a few of the actions resulting in loss of trust," unquote. Mayor Berry attached Facebook posts about Bear Smart that had nothing to do with the committee. He complained about trespassing, but no Bear Smart Committee members participated in the one twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two canvas by a Squamish bear educator and Lions Bay bylaw officer. The mayor accused Bear Smart of censorship, but the committee has no influence over council decisions about what is published in the village update. Then on March fifth, twenty twenty-four, an email from Mr. Caravetta advised Mayor Berry that the COS was undertaking a review of Lions Bay's Bear Smart status in a March seventh response to Mr. Caravetta with CAO Blackwell copied. Mayor Berry wrote, quote, "Unfortunately, when it comes to bears, there has often been divergence between safety and Bear Smart initiatives," unquote. These emails indicate that Mayor Berry and Counselor Broton have undermined Lions Bay Bear Smart's reputation with the COS. As twenty twenty-five chair of the committee, I ask council to indicate whether they support our education programs and endeavors to maintain Bear Smart community status with a show of hands. Thank you. Thank you, too.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other delegations?
Oh, and I've got copies here if anyone wants to check them out of the emails.
Thank you very much.
Please, welcome.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I'll just, uh, a few housekeeping matters. For each of the agenda items, the chair will ask for a mover and a second or. We'll also, uh, please speak only to a motion. The chair will acknowledge the speaking order. And please direct your questions through the chair. Thank you. And please be respectful to fellow counselors and staff. Okay, with that, we'll move right to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes from May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Okay, second.
One second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Conlon, second by Counselor Abbott. Any questions, edits? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, do we have a motion for July fifteenth, uh, council minutes? We have a mover for that?
So moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Broton, second by Counselor Conlon. Any edits, questions? Okay, Counselor Abbott?
Um, I'd like to point out in the previous council meeting, uh, the decision voted unanimous unanimously, the way I remember it, was that these meeting minutes should come to a closed council meeting for a discussion prior to being, um, reviewed. So I suggest they should take them off the agenda.
Okay, uh, Mr. Blackwell, did you have some comments on that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, um, Crystal actually reviewed the minutes if you want to, in council.
Yeah, I reviewed the recording of the regular council meeting of October fifteenth, where these minutes being tabled was discussed. So initially, Counselor Reuter motioned to have them tabled to be discussed in close. That was submitted by Counselor Abbott. And then the discussion ensued. No vote happened at that time. The discussion ensued. Uh, and then there was a vote. Um, Mayor Berry proposed a motion to table the minutes, but there was no, uh, reference to being tabled in a closed session, and that was voted on.
Okay.
And that was.
Okay, and any discussion, further discussion?
Um, well, I think we all agreed that the intent was we wanted to review these in close, correct?
Uh, no, I didn't agree to, to review these in close. In fact, I would prefer that we have more discussion in open. Uh, I think these discussions are keeping being moved to close are not in the best interest of the community, so I'm not in favor of that. Counsel Broton?
Um, I don't recall that motion being unanimous. I'm not sure, you know, where that, where that came from.
It was unanimous. Oh, I went and listened to it.
Sorry?
I went and listened to it, and to Crystal. Everyone voted in favor, and the mayor did not vote.
I think if the intent was to bring these back into close.
It was a hundred percent intent.
We need to.
And what's the purpose of moving into closed?
I think that that would be best left enclosed because I think that it may not reflect every member at this table in a positive light, and I think out of respect for that, we should have a discussion enclosed prior to a discussion in open.
Okay, uh, Mr. Blackwell, in your opinion?
Uh, just for clarification, uh, open minutes have to be adopted only in open. So when you're considering adopting these minutes, if there is a matter that you feel you wish to discuss a closed, you need to cite the section, section ninety, that would apply. And then you can choose to go, council could choose to resolve to go into close to discuss that matter, then come back into open.
So then I would care to amend. I, I realize that we have to, um, review them in open, but we do need to have a discussion in closed and then bring it out. So I would suggest we table this until our next closed session, have that discussion, bring them into open for adoption at that point.
Indeed.
Okay, Counselor Broton has answered. I'll go to Counselor Broton.
I've just, is, is there a difficulty with the actual minutes? That, uh, mind, we're looking at the minutes of this meeting. And is, is it an accurate representation of, of the, of the minutes of the meeting? And if so.
They are not.
Then, then they, they should be accepted. And if there's some issue, perhaps some business arising from them, I don't know. Maybe that's business arising, I don't know. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, you're saying that they, they aren't.
Counselor Abbott.
You asked, you asked a question. Do I believe that accurate representation of the meeting? Absolutely not. And that's why, but that matter that is not represented there needs to be just enclosed. This is a matter of, I think it's the common ANC, ninety-one ANC, um, those both personal and, and labor. And I think it needs to go into, we need to discuss that first.
So wouldn't that be a new topic arising from the minutes? Because these minutes, if they accurately reflect, uh, what took place.
I just said they do not accurately reflect what took place.
Mr. Blackwell, you had your hand up?
I was just going to say, ask that question, and it's inherently flawed relative to what's being recorded. I have not learned of any information that would allow me to advise council that there was anything observed that conflicts with the minutes, but if council feels that there's a, there's some inaccuracy, then that should be discussed and dealt with in open, as these are open minutes. If there's a peripheral matter that council wishes to discuss, associate with the minutes, as they say, you decide the section and then council can vote whether they go into close or not.
Okay, now we have an amendment to move into close from Counselor Conlon. Was that seconded?
I amended to table these until the next closed, scheduled closed section. I'm not suggesting we go into closed.
Counselor Abbott, you had your hand up?
Um, I was, the question is, yeah, when we use the word record, you mean how, how it was written or recording, recorded? It was written, yeah, okay.
So which item in these minutes is an issue?
It's not mentioned in the minutes. It happened in the meeting. I'm uncomfortable getting any further with this.
It happened in an open ma- meeting?
And it was not accurately recorded in the minutes.
Okay, all those in favor of?
Zero, is there a seconders?
Was there a seconder to that?
Secondary to what? To James?
The first.
To the next closed meet, just to be clear, to the next closed meeting, correct?
Is that what you said?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I'm in favor of, uh, referring to this in open. So all in favor of deferring this? Opposed? Okay, motion defeated. Okay, all in favor of approving these minutes from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four? We have a motion? Okay, second.
If, if there's an issue that derived from, I think that should be derived from, yeah.
Yeah, we'll bring it up at the next close then. But I don't see any reason why I meant to address these matters in open. Quite frankly, the, the communities are getting a little bit tired of all these closed items. So, okay, uh, motion, uh, I'll call the question, those in favor?
There's no seconders.
Okay, seconded. All in favor?
I'm sorry, what are we?
We're voting on approving the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. All in favor? Okay, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion defeated. Okay, we'll move to October fifteenth minutes, twenty twenty-four, motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, second by Counselor Abbott. Any discussion?
Um, I have some discussion, but I just maybe have a question to ask. We used to do minutes by having corrections, and then we'd have a business arising section from the minutes. We don't have that on the agenda anymore. And we don't have unfinished business work. Um, what, what, what is that process now? Are we just going into the minutes and discussing both?
Wait, uh, Mr. Blackwell?
Thank you. So business arising should be, that should be in here as should be the action log should be in here. So we will make sure that is, that is in the, on the next agenda.
So what are we doing this evening? We're going to discuss both as review in the minutes?
You'll have to squeeze it into the review of the minutes because you can't change the format of the agenda at this point.
All right, Mr. Blackwell, pretty much, review of the minutes is right now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, any additions, edits? Yeah, Counselor Abbott?
One, obviously. I thought I was going to admit as arising, but it's just, I'm cleaning out. Um, so the first one would be, I think that's, this question's been answered on page sixteen. There was a resolution, the future meetings and action log and the business arising will be included in the minutes. It was carried, opposed by Berry and Broton. So am I taking that from what I just heard will be in future? Can we put on the action log that we will have an action log? Because it hasn't happened yet?
That was Blackwell.
Uh, well, I've, I've explained this to council already that there was a transition that sort of caused some complications with resurrecting that action log. Ms. Kenna is in the process of, of doing that, and she's almost there. Uh, so this would be, as I say, uh, on committee of the whole agenda for just general conversation about these items. And will be on the regular council meeting if council has any specific resolutions associated with any of the topics.
Mayor? Uh, yeah, Counsel Broton?
Um, I, as I recall, uh, I voted against that motion because we're being, it was recommended by the CAO that this law, I wasn't opposed in any way to the law, in fact, it's a very strong idea. I think the issue was whether it came first to the committee of the whole. And, uh, if, if it was part of the committee of the whole and not of the regular council meeting. And I just heard the CAO explain that, um, he's suggesting that it would come to the committee of the whole and items that, that may be for general discussion, and then items that require a decision would then be referred to the, um, regular council meetings. Is that correct?
Mr. Blackwell, sort of, uh, except the whole log will be included in both.
In both.
It's just the expectation would be that you, there's no point in replicating the discussion piece.
For the discussion, it would be focused in the committee.
Yeah, so if there's, in a, in a regular council meeting, if there's no specific actions.
Right.
Associated with any of those, there would be no comment on those because you would have done that committee. If there was an item on there, that somebody wanted to move motion, then, then, let's choose to do that.
Okay, uh, I recall voting against that because, uh, I think I took the advice of our CAO, which was, uh, this to-do list should be in the committee of the whole, and that it was eating up valuable time in our council meetings and that matters could be addressed in the committee of the whole. Uh, if that's acceptable to the counselors, perhaps we can continue to address it in the committee of the whole. If not, then I think uh, we need to, uh, I guess revisit that, that list. Yeah, Counselor Abbott?
Don't think we need to revisit it. We have already, CAOs agreed, and we have a resolution that will be in regular council meeting. And now, now we see no reason to rescind that standard.
Okay, um, I think I mentioned the last time, then, uh, uh, Mr. Blackwell, if we could please add to that to-do, to-do list, the three-pronged approach, which was passed by resolution and has not been, you've not been able to get the counselors to the table for this meeting. Could we also add the report to the province on when we will adopt, uh, those recommendations? And I would also excuse me, I'm speaking.
A point of order. You're not speaking to the motion. You're speaking on something completely different. You told us to keep talking to the motion. The motion is approved these minutes. In point of order, you're not speaking to it.
Okay, I'm speaking to the to-do list, and that to-do list included the, the CAO.
In point of order, it had nothing to do.
Strategy workbook.
It had nothing to do with your suggestion. It was not, was on, in the minutes.
If you can just add that to the to-do list, uh, and I guess that'll be at the next council meeting, right?
Not only is council agrees to put it on the to-do list, no one has, and it's never been brought up. We're talking about some minutes here. You can bring it forward as a suggestion and see if council agree with you.
And let our, let our CAO bring these, uh, items to the table and.
I want to get on a point of order, once again.
Thank you, counsel. Might recall that the last committee of all this matter was raised, and staff agreed to bring both of those things forward, the action items and this to-do list as well.
Okay, good. All right, all in favor of October fifteenth?
No, I'm not finished.
Oh, okay, Counsel Broton, you had your hand up?
I'm still.
Sorry, it was Counsel Abbott.
Okay, the top of page fifteen, and this brings us back to the earlier conversation. Um, as myself and Jamie has attested, that statement should have been, we're getting council meeting minutes of July sixteen tabled for a future closed discussion. I would have to once again critically listen to what, um, the deputy court officer told us. I'm not saying she was wrong. I think that's just complete misunderstanding. The word closed wasn't added to the second part. So I would suggest that we at least put in here, discussion ensued, and three counselors recommended that this come to a closed meeting. And then you can hear the resolution as it was, and it was all mixed.
Okay, you can also add that the mayor and Counselor Broton objected to that, and they wished the conversation to take place in open because I believe I recall that. And Mr. Blackwell, do you have a comment? Are we getting into, uh, lengthy discussion within our minutes? Was that recommended by you or?
No, it was, the minister tended just to, excuse me, the snapshot, the summary of the nature of the discussion. We're not just not, we tend to be.
Okay, all in favor of approving the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes?
As amended?
As, as amended?
I'm sure.
Sorry, what was the amendment?
Uh, I'll have to ask Counselor Abbott to repeat that because it's a little longer than I can record.
In, in front of the section on, uh, top of page eighteen, um, item B, the last sixteenth minutes. Um, counselors Abbott, Reuter, and Conlon requested that the minutes be brought to a closed meeting. All of you.
Okay, and I, and I asked for Counsel, uh, Mr. Blackwell's opinion on that. He says that a lengthy discussion within the minutes is not warranted, but if we are going to add that, I'd also like to say that uh, Counselor Broton and Mayor Berry, uh, objected to that and wish to have this topic discussed in open meeting.
Just in a straight. Miss creative question to Counselor Abbott, can we change the one word to, rather than review, because you can't review those minutes in close? You say bring them into close for discussion.
I think the word discussion was what was used, to be honest. It actually was discussion, yeah.
Okay, and under what section are we going on this again?
Uh, well, you, uh, you don't have to specify that now. It's when, when that comes forward, you will be having to articulate what section. It's up to, unfortunately, check our, for, shall I have a review, which is, I said, subject to council to police the, the efficacy of the claim that any given item, uh, constitutes satisfying section mighty.
Okay. All in favor? Of the amendments?
I'm sure.
Thanks, I'm.
So the amendments.
The minutes as amendments.
The minutes as amendments.
It won't clear, who is it?
Uh, could I hear the amendment again? I'm sorry, I've lost in the shuffle here.
Okay, we're, we're expanding on this against the CAO's recommendation. Counselor Abbott has asked to expand these minutes, uh, and I put in that to include that three counselors voted that they wanted to move these to close. Uh, I had, uh, suggested an amendment, uh, that would add that Counselor Broton and Mayor Berry oppose this, that they wish to have it in open. Quite frankly, I think maybe the best way is just to call the, the one amendment, vote on it, and then we'll re-vote on the original if that doesn't pass. So Counselor Conlon?
I just. I'm neither here nor there whether we want to state who is for and who is against, but fundamentally, the statement was made that we wanted to bring these back to a closed meeting for discussion. I'm happy with leaving it at that. If we want to say that three counselors voted in favor, two voted opposed, that doesn't matter to me, but that is not expanding on the actual minutes. That is a vital part of the discussion that was left out of the minutes as they are presented to us.
Okay, I'll call a question to Counselor Abbott's amendment. All in favor?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, just to clarify that, you have a motion to depose right now? So if you want to break them into two, you have to defeat this motion, or you have the mover has to withdraw the motion.
Okay, Counsel Broton?
Uh, in light of the fact that the minutes were just not accepted, um, the discussion that I'm hearing is trying to assist the minutes to get dealt with to be ultimately accepted. Is that correct? And so this is a clarification that they, as to, which will, uh, give us a bit of information as to why they may be going into quotes, or why, why they would be discussed in quotes, why they have not been accepted, and why they may be discussed in quotes. Is that correct?
Mr. Blackwell?
I had to hear that, no.
Okay, I'll call a question with the amendment of Counselor Abbott. Okay, all in favor?
Sorry, we don't have a motion to that effect. We have a motion, a mover and a second or. So the motion before you is both amendments? So if we can either defeat that or withdraw the motion.
Can I just, can I just raise a point? I think we really agree what's going to happen next. We can leave the minutes inaccurate if that's what you care to do. I listened to it. It happens fifty-four minutes into the meeting, neither of you argued against it and neither of you voted against it. So that's, and now it would, someone could go and listen to it. Let's accept the minutes. We know we're going to take this in the next closed discussion.
Okay, all in favor of the minutes?
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, you've rescinded that, have you? You've rescinded your amendment?
It was.
Motion's on the table, okay. Mr. Blackwell, motion on the table. Sorry, folks, I know, we'll get to the business of the community somewhere along the way here.
See, they have to vote it down.
Yeah.
For the mover, which I recorded as councillor Brown, I don't know if that's incorrect, but I have recorded this moved by councillor Brown, segmented by councillor Abbott. That mover would have to withdraw that motion or council would have to defeat the motion and then you can start over.
Okay, all in favor?
I'll, I'll remove remove the motion at this point because I, I think we're just creating more issues here. So.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell, can we go back to the original motion here? Can we rescind? It's been rescinded by councillor Abbott. Councillor Brown has rescinded. Can we go back to the October fifteenth, twenty, twenty-four minutes? Do I have a motion to accept these minutes? Okay, moved by councillor Kamla. Do I have a second? A second, all in favor? Okay, proposed, motion carried. Okay, thirty minutes from November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Moved by councillor Brown, second.
One second.
Okay, councillor Abbott, second. Discussion. Call a question.
I'm sorry. But I have some unfinished business. Can we make sure we add, should we met as arising? We don't have them tonight. And on the top of page nineteen, and there was an action from the C A O, he advised that he was going to bring a parking management report for that to a future council meeting. Can we put that on the unfinished business log? Sorry, page, I got the wrong page and I was looking. So top of page twenty-five. So administrator C A O advised that a report on parking management in the village would be provided at a future council meeting. Can we put that on unfinished blog?
Mr. Blackwell, any comments?
Uh, no, duly noted, yeah.
On, on the bottom of that page, there was an action staff to provide cost associated with post tuning to for holiday closure and brought back to council and put that on the unfinished business log now that we've cleared up the way forward. Previous meeting.
That's gonna, the next meeting will be after Christmas.
Okay.
Mr. Blackwell, can you just disprove that information prior to Christmas perhaps?
Uh, sorry, I'm not clear. So this has been already presented to council.
Yes, and I think there was a question that, that, that wanted the cost breakdown.
So that's been provided by Mr. Cherkov? During the discussions, yeah.
It was provided during the discussion before we decided on our way forward. So it's not actually accurate to what we're doing. So all I'm asking is can we get the actual costs after we've made the decision what we're doing?
Uh, you, you mean like, like written form?
Yeah, in, in the meeting, Mr. Cherkov provided us some information. We had further discussion of what that meant. We changed a few things around. What is the, what does it cost us at the end of the day? You've never received that answer.
So update, update on the actual cost.
Sure. Can we put that on unfinished business log?
Mr. Blackwell, you finally provide that? Okay, all in favor?
I'm not finished yet.
So what, so to clarify, what were the implications of the decision that was made?
Correct, of course, implication, decision. Um, there was another action on the bottom of page twenty-six. Called, called beer director operations to contract the Ministry of Transportation infrastructure regarding concerns about concrete barriers on, on, it says upper levels highways, but I think we're actually talking about sea to sky through the village. Um, or either side of the village.
Okay. Is this appropriate, Mr. Blackwell, for me to ask for those items that I talked about during that meeting? Be added to this to-do list?
I am only quoting from the minute.
Uh, staff is already doing this. It's normal for staff to, to review these things and pull them up and populate the uh, action, the action box.
Action.
So the outstanding items will be put on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So is the point that it's not upper levels highway, that it's the sea to sky highway?
It's the sea to sky, yeah.
Okay, anything else, councillor Abbott?
I'm good.
Okay, all in favor with the amendments? Both, motion carried.
There's no amendments.
All right, we'll move to reports, not item six. One, and do we have a motion on the table to accept the investment proposal?
So moved.
Second. Okay, discussion, Mr. Cherkov. If you'll just run us through that briefly.
On the camera. So the council had approved the investment policy in accordance with the investment policy and a new investment requires council approval. About like, the investment strategy here that provides for liquidity immediately through our savings account and then a tiered structure of investments in G I Cs and investment with the municipal finance authority and pooled mortgage funds. Um, these are all allowable investments according to policy and the charter. And that's really, I've got all the information in there. The appendix one is the investment policy itself. And next to give you some background information on current rates that are being offered. And I would advise that you move forward as quickly as possible as there are coming up. Uh, so I'd like to lock in returns.
Okay, councillor Brown.
Uh, the, the three pages of, of rates that are provided here are all of these, did, did they all qualify or they all? Or?
Just for your information, that comes from radio teams. I get a weekly report on what the current rates are being offered in market.
In the various, like, like, we, we aren't able to invest in a triple B.
No, no, it'd be in, in, in double A.
Yes, you all be double A, okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, so these other ones are just basically for other interests.
Just for information.
Okay, for information. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Now, in terms of the the short-term recommendation here, the M F A tool investment fund is at four point five nine percent. Is, is that locked in and if so, for how long?
Um, I need to come back with that. It can be redeemed. And as far as the term, they said, my understanding is two years.
Okay. So is, if it, if it can be redeemed, um, is there any reason to not count more of these millions into that?
The investment policy requires diversification to minimize risk for a portfolio. While the municipal finance authority is pretty much guaranteed, there's zero risk. And the, from the drugs that I've received from council is that we should diversify. Uh, do is make sure that we are in terms of length of investment and in terms of provider of investment. I am willing, absolutely happy to solicit any feedback in respect to that.
Okay, councillor Abbott, you have your hand up?
A similar question to that before I get the, I just, so if we did follow this, we can talk about fixing for a, any particular term, several different terms, four million dollars. Um, and then you stated, Joe, the current date, the current date of the village has five point seven five in his bank account.
Uh, in savings account.
In savings account.
And how much?
Okay.
Checking, we have six hundred thousand dollars.
So we have another six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that would cover our expenses.
And we cover typical expenses.
Typical expenses, correct.
Okay, so that was my question, okay. So then my question is, I'm asking myself and maybe she'll ask herself, so we have one point seven five one point seven five million dollars left in the savings account for that rainy day event.
Immediate liquidity, if it earns interest at three point six percent?
Yeah, but it's, that's what we got.
Yeah.
So the question is, and maybe we should all think about this, uh, one major pipe burst. Is that enough money? I think that's the kind of question we should be asking ourselves.
Right, and the, so the nature of these investments are G I Cs, guaranteed investment certificates. Um, there are redeemable and unredeemable. Um, there will be a mixture, then like the ninety-day or one-year term ones are generally redeemable without any penalty. You have a two-year term, there could be a redemption where you're fixing it. However, you can redeem it, worst case scenario, you're just going to pay a penalty. So that's the outside channel.
Go, just finish my thought. Um, okay, so where I was going with this, the, the M F A to my knowledge, and I, when it was the M F A, you can pull money out after ninety, in ninety days, you can redeem in a ninety-day period. And it is the highest interest rate. I mean, it is a very secure fund because it's supported by municipalities. So my thought would have been if you're going to make, want anything ninety-day redeemable, why wouldn't you put all of it into the M F A? Because then you're going to get the more, more interest. That would be, would have been my suggestion.
Your turn. Yeah.
So I'll take all of the ninety-day funds. I understand you just said we, we need to diversify.
Yeah.
But the stuff that's in, in the fixed ninety-day fixed, that million dollars could then be gaining, yeah, almost a four percent interest more if it was in the M F A.
Um, to the chair, I absolutely agree with councillor Abbott. Um, I would love to park more money with the M F A. It's a secure investment. Uh, and it is generally liquid. This proposal was to float uh, through council and a return in an appetite level for risk and uh, diversity in investment. If council, yeah, is so mind, is so minded that you can put more money into one pool, which is the M F A, then achieve a higher interest rate of return. I would have, be happy to pursue that.
That would be my suggestion. All right, one other question. And this liquidity. What, what, you mentioned your securities with active or secondary resale markets where appropriate. Can you spend on that, what you're suggesting here? What, what's knowledge you see where we try to resell some, some of this investment?
I don't think that anything that I'm talking about here is applicable to that.
So that really is affecting into this decision. It is in your report now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So even a two-year investment can be liquidated in thirty days if we had to.
Yeah.
Of a fight.
Yeah.
And a hundred and ninety day can be liquidated or a hundred and eighty day.
You really, it's G I Cs.
And how much does it cost us waiting? You waiting for council to make a decision like this?
Uh, point and a half per day.
And what is the total amount since we originally approved this thing? I don't know how long ago, like months and months, so.
Um, May, May or June?
Uh, sorry, let me, let me have, answer this because I, I'm just not sure why we're meddling in this, like you, you've got these financial analysts and, and, and investment advisors at your disposal. Why aren't we making decisions on this? Because I, tell me again, I'm sure this has cost, I think I've asked you offline, but it's cost us in the tens of thousands of dollars. Uh, and you're looking for a, a commitment from a council that we can liquidate these things in thirty days, even two-year investments. They're all marketable investments is what you're telling me.
Yes, um, the brief, uh, the brief history is that the, the investment policy was proposed last November. Um, through various meetings, it was delayed, uh, approval to, or um, the past meeting and the, I, when so interest rate started to really tank in May. And if we'd had that approved, say, in, or possibly, uh, investing in, say, April, I could have locked in rates at six and a half percent.
So what's a dollar figure?
Seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand dollars we lost because we can't make decisions. I, I, I say, let's let the staff make the decisions on these. We, you know, we're setting the policy. We want them to be uh, investments that we can liquidate on short notice if necessary. And we want them to comply with municipal act, but I, I think we need to get on with things here.
If, if I may, um, and just as a point of clarification. Um, the reason why the investment, a new investment requires council approval is because councillor Boyer asked for that specifically to be, and there's a safeguard. So assuming that, um, you, uh, council approves the investment structure, I will move forward and, uh, with those investments and then they just be rolled over as needed. If there's a new investment in accordance with our policy, yes, we're currently written, I would need to come back to council to approve that investment.
As a former investment advisor, I these are liquid. We can, again, we can sell them if we need them. So I, I suggest that staff, Mr. Blackwell and Mr. Cherkov have have a good handle on, on what the requirements are for cash flow. But councillor Abbott.
Um, I really don't think we need to delay this any longer. We have a policy, we have an agreed policy. C A O, sorry. C A O, uh, a financial officer is trying to work with the policy and part of it required him come back to this meeting here. So let's not go back and start re-divesting the policy because then we have to rescind it and do it all over again.
We've got a motion on the table. We've got a second, so we'll call the question after councillor Kamla.
I just, out of curiosity, what would be the penalty to cash out early of, say, a two-year G I C versus what it would cost us in interest to take a loan if we had some sort of crisis and we needed cash like now?
It would depend on the fashion institution and where I'm investing it. Um, I would need to come back to you with the, yes, that cost.
Okay, it's now, I, I'm in favor of the investment. I'm just curious.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell, before we call the question.
Just a thought, based on what I've heard council say, uh, with regard to the ninety-day fixed. Um, if council is so minded that they wish to have uh, that amount parked with the M F A at a higher rate of return, still, I would argue um, or suggest that still honors the policy in terms of diversification. It'll give you a higher rate of return. And if council is so minded, then all that requires is a friendly amendment for the mover to revise.
Councillor Brown, you have your hand up?
I, I believe an amendment would be in order, so I, I just would like to facilitate that, but, but.
Councillor Abbott.
Councillor Abbott, do you already have a, something in mind otherwise, or class?
Yeah, well, probably the same, a bit of mine, the amendment would have been to move the ninety-day fixed into the municipal, uh, financial authority pool investment and make that value two million dollars and then prove it as it is.
What about the other, other two amendments?
I'm suggesting we leave them here because we told we need to diversify. So we leave them where they are.
Okay.
So is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Amendment to the motion, yeah.
Amendment to the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Sorry, need a second.
A second or councillor Kamla, all in favor?
Yes.
Both, motion carried. Okay, uh, item six point one, point two, accounts payable information, for information purposes, any questions? Oh, okay, six point one, point three. Twenty twenty-five, first reading of budget, do we have motion?
Some apologies today. Can I just go back to, um, the, um, council, um, or to, I'm sorry, councillor Brown, to point this out. Did we amend the, the agenda item with the, um, accounts payable list? Um, correct now, so you can actually read it across the page? Oh, it, oh, it has been amended on the website already. Okay, that's all, all right, that's fine, sorry.
Okay. Uh, six point one, uh, six point one point three, do we have motion for first reading in twenty twenty-five budget? Mr. Cherkov, you may want to just wait in case there's any questions, thanks. Okay, councillor Kamla, move that. Do we have a second? A second or the first reading of the budget? Okay, I'll second that. Okay, discussion. Questions for Mr. Cherkov? Okay, councillor Brown?
I am, I'm uncomfortable. The budget currently is, is struck with a five percent increase next year. And as I've mentioned in previous, sorry about my throat here, my voice, I should say. Um, as I've mentioned in a previous meeting, the, I, I'm quite concerned about, about the impact of, of tax increases beyond, but I believe are, are necessary at this point in time. Uh, because I'm, I'm most concerned, I'm concerned about the. Uh because I'm I'm most concerned, I'm concerned about the the impact today. But I'm also very concerned about the compounding in fact impact. Uh last year, when we accepted a nine percent increase, uh if we continued at that rate. Uh we would have have uh we would double our tax burden to the residents in eight years. If we go with a, say, a five percent this year, it's a little bit challenging to figure out the 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 doubling effect, but. But uh the fourteen percent over the two years, we would, we would be looking at doubling our tax rate after about ten years. And my recommendation is that we would go with a three percent tax increase. Um which is uh which would give us an average of twelve over the two years, six over the two years. Which would slow our doubling rate down to, say, in twelve, doubling in twelve years. Um I think we need to take into consideration that the impact on on some of the young families who are experiencing. Mortgage renewals and everything else, um and also uh fixed income um earners. And uh that that we should try really strive to uh go with three percent at this point. Um I think in in picking up on the discussion of a short time ago, just a few minutes ago. Uh we need to look at uh uh really sharpening our our men- means of income. And we have uh a lot of funds that have been collected over time, including the ten percent um infrastructure. Um levy, which uh it was for up until January tenth of twenty twenty three. Was in a savings account at a very low interest rate. So I I think. We we really need to look very closely at getting the best possible um return on investment. And uh I'm and 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 also uh look at at any kind, any any and all costs. And allocations of of uh of of uh income that that we have. So um I'm I would be looking to set the um the rate for next year at three percent. Uh the computer, uh the pardon me, the consumer pricing base is three point four percent for last year. Uh I don't know what it was for for the this year, I should say, I'm not sure what it was for last year, but it wasn't nine percent. Um and so I just think uh. We already have a ten percent infrastructure levy uh put on top of this. And um I've reached out to the financial officer and asked him what other communities continue to have a an infrastructure levy. And at this point in time, I'm only aware of of two, uh Quinell and Hope. Uh one has a. Six point, Quinell has a nine point five capital investment levy. And Hope has a six point five levy. So um. Any tax increase that we have. It's also impacted, we then put another ten percent on top of that for our infrastructure levy. And as I said, I'm quite very concerned about how we're in that, how that money, which is being put aside for very. Much needed uh infrastructure, how that's being invested, so I'm I'm happy to to see that that we've. Increased the the revenue for 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 uh interest significantly since January tenth, twenty twenty three. Also, anyway, so in terms of of uh first reading of the budget. My, I would suggest that we amend it to reflect the three percent tax increase.
Okay, thank you for that. Um Mister Blackwell, you have your hand up.
Thank you, just a little bit of deeper context that I that I should offer to council in consideration of this. These are always difficult conversations, and there's a divergence between what the any given community will pay for. And the need to draw on financial resources to maintain the operation of the community. It's a perennial problem. Uh Lions Bay has a fairly fast diverging reality with regard to. Uh by the um value of infrastructure that's gonna need to be replaced over time. Relative with relative to uh. The in income stream that it it derives from property taxes, and so um. What I'm talking about here is financial sustainability. We suggest that I don't feel that the village is financially sustainable. And I think it would be very prudent for the community or the municipality council. To start entertaining discussions about how the community can move to greater financial sust- sustainability. Um you know, notwithstanding this, there are many, many items that could be added to the the the. Uh list of works that need to be done, there's an A C pipe, eight hundred meters of A C pipe that need to be replaced. There's a fire truck coming.
A C pipe's not that important, cost on prices.
It's a fire truck that needs to be replaced. Pretty soon, that that's probably in the order of a couple of million dollars. Council's not putting enough money aside, so I'm just saying that what the community's ability to pay is relative to. The demands around infrastructure are starting to go to to separate, so I'm just saying beware of that.
Okay, uh Mister Blackwell, is the difference between a five percent, three percent going to close that gap you're referring to?
No, not at all, but you know, every penny helps. Um if council was so minded to not proceed ultimately with five percent. Uh what I would hope council would provide is specific direction, not just sort of. Put staff in a position of having to go on a fishing exercise and say, how about this, how about this, how about this? We need specific direction as to what what council would want removed from the budget in order to achieve that.
Okay, councillor Abbott.
Um first of all, I'll just address the um the infrastructure living, it's not a question of. Where it's invested, it's a question of why aren't we spending it? We need to spend it, it takes for a reason, it's the very reasons you're talking about, we need to start fixing the things that are broken, that's what the money is there for. Um putting that aside, I I spent some considerable time this weekend. Trying to understand the operational side of the budget. And 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 I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I struggled. And I, and that's why I sent you that email this morning, yesterday, joke, and then yesterday, Sunday, um. I would really like to look at, I mean, if I look at the administration button, the administrative fund budget. We have an increase of sixteen point nine percent, seventeen percent. But councillor Bratton's saying, eh, we should only increase our taxes by three point nine percent. I wanna look at that and compare that to our actuals from twenty twenty four. Or if not, the third quarter um actuals. Um which I can then, or third quarter actually I can then use to forecast. We got those in a separate breakout in a separate format, not in the same lines. Um going back three pages, that's what I'd like to see, and I'd like to look us to look at where where this. This particular case, seventeen percent interest came from, I know some of it was salary increases out of our, out of our control. Um but I think we need to look at it with that kind of lens and then decide. To the C O's point, okay, councillor wants to challenge you, why is this particular line item going over year on year on year? And can we fix it, can we reverse that trend? So I I'd like to see that before we go any further. Um I don't think we need to see the twenty twenty one actuals, I don't think you need to see the twenty twenty two actuals. If we could just have a year to date on the same spreadsheet in the same line, then all these comments and everything line up. Then then that's how my brain works, and then I think we can analyze where we're going with this and why we have these larger increases.
Mister Blackwell.
Uh I I think that's reasonable with regard to, um it's important that council's comfortable with this, this is a, this is the single. Probably the single most significant piece of council work done every year to set the budget. That sets the table for all the work that is being done, so council needs to make sure it has it right, as right as you can get it. Um so we're happy to do that, the question is how you do, how you work with this resolution. That is on the table now, your options are proceed, give it first reading. Staff will take away these comments and bring that back and get uh for you to consider. When you're considering second reading, so if council is so minded to proceed with. Uh first reading, it doesn't mean that you can't revise these things. Uh if there's a fundamental flaw in what you're seeing, then you need to probably just defeat it would be the coolest. And propose something different.
Okay, councillor Conlon.
Well, my only comment is that we lower taxes to three point five and not five percent, we're just prolonging. The potential of a parcel tax that each resident is faced with when we do have a disaster and we don't have money put away. So the more we have in the kitty, the less that will be, and I'm a Kelvin Grove resident who's been paying a parcel tax. For the wastewater treatment plant for the last four years or three years and will be for another seven. And it is a reality that every residence in Lions Bay has to face, that if something big happens. We're gonna come knocking on your door and everybody might have to pony up twenty grand. And if we could lessen that pain and make it thirteen, I think that that's the responsible thing to do, so I'm really uncomfortable. At three and a half percent. I don't wanna pay more tax either, but I just wanna be realistic.
Good, councillor Abbott.
Um one other point, I didn't talk on the capex side. Um we've had some discussions, the committee of the whole meeting on the capex, and there's been several suggestions, um. Uh we we sitting, there haven't been any corrections made, it's still sitting at three point eight million um for capex. I thought, I would have thought when we got to first reading, we would at least narrow down these into. Um what we expect to do, or maybe that 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 we do tonight, but. You know, we're the first reading where it sits at three point eight million, I just feel we've got a long way to go before we do that. Um. I'd like to see some more of these suggestions in the thing before we do your first reading. Both the operations saving interview.
Mister Chirkoff, I mean, uh so yes, uh this was the result of the committee of the whole in the last meeting. Uh then it was just for, because we had uh one week transition time. The uh I would suggest that in our working group and the committee of the whole. Where their amendments uh will be incorporated, there's also a significant hole in the five year forecast as to what projects we. Expect to um work on and save for and cash flow for. That was um discussed in our last meeting where it was difficult to identify which project to do. And to your point, we should be spending that money, we don't have a strategic plan, um so there definitely is some work. Um I think that our best outcome in this meeting is that we. Either um defeat the motion or uh move forward the motion with basically. At least understanding what um uh the tax rate might be. I don't think there's any question on on the utility weight increases, so. I would suggest that if council could come to an agreement on the property tax increase and then move forward. We could start filling in the other pieces towards our next committee of the whole meeting. Um and you know, through meetings throughout December and January. Um it would better reflect what council is so minded of. Um and if there can't be any sort of agreement on the property tax increase, which has been there as a point of discussion. Since we started the budgeting process, um I would suggest that we just take the motion and then. Okay, we've got a motion on the table of five percent, uh councillor Brogan suggested three, I think, or was it three and a half?
Three.
Three, um that hasn't been seconded. Uh I'm hearing just at the table that uh. Um there's some other issues that um it sounds like we either should have another committee of the whole or. Uh Mister Chirkoff should set up some times and uh and we break away and and go through some of these details. Mister Blackwell.
I got just to remind council, the goal of this budget was to get it adopted by the end of the year, so it looks like we're not there with with our process. So as I mentioned, in the committee of the whole, we'll continue to find you in our process. So that we can have council in the position where it's comfortable in uh grant and file. Uh for adoption uh in December for next year. Again, as I said earlier, it's important we get it right, so we'll bring it back to the committee of the whole in January. My ask of council would be that you provide all of the detail you need in order to make a decision. Um because if we don't, it's gonna be the end of April, yeah, and want to avoid that. Uh the goal is to be able to start the year knowing, be able to plan in terms of operations. Being able to plan its infrastructure projects because it knows what budget it has to work with. So the longer we delay that, the more complicated.
Okay, um Mister Chirkoff, if you could line up a couple of meetings before Christmas Eve, that would help. And I think we'd get a little closer, councillor Brogan.
Uh I just wanted to be very clear that that what my goal here is, is to. Um make it sustainable for for people to to live in Lions Bay. Um and to, I agree fully with um councillor Abbott. That um you know, we have, we have funds that we need to, we need to keep moving on some of these projects. And um so what what my concern is is to ensure that that. That we get, that we're moving forward with projects, that we have the funds in hand, that we're keeping a sharp eye on on the funds that we have. That and that and that it's sustainable, we clearly cannot do all the work that we need to do without grant funding or. Some some other kind of, uh it's not gonna happen from tax base, but um. But I I I think that just to make it um. Painful is the word, only word that comes to mind at the moment, but um uh uh. I'm not seeing the benefit of of if we keep boosting our tax rate, I think we need to keep keep focused on. On our expenses and on our income, and um I'm looking here for thirty nine thousand dollars. The difference between three percent increase and five percent increase is between fifty eight thousand. And ninety seven thousand uh to the to uh to the budget. Now to actual, you know, to our residents, um that it's 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 an increase and it's an increase that the compound. So that's where, you know, it's it's sort of do the math kind of exercise, so I I. I I totally support us moving ahead with first reading, if there's any way we can do that.
Okay, uh so your three percent motion at the moment is not conseconded, so we still have five percent on the table. Heard councillor Conlon say, you know, parcel tax is is onerous on Kelvin Grove residents. Uh Mister Blackwell has mentioned that whether it's three or five percent. Uh it's not even gonna come close to covering our needs for infrastructure in the future. Uh he suggested that we have some meetings in the new year, uh perhaps town hall meetings or get togethers and and uh and. Yeah tackle the question, how do we uh come up with long term financial sustainability for the village in terms of this evening?
Complete a strategic plan.
Strategic plan as well.
Yeah.
In terms of this evening, uh if we wanna keep on somewhat of the time, uh we've also got to Mister Chirkoff, which is gonna set up at least two meetings. Between now and Christmas and the next committee of the whole, so the question here, we'll, I'll call the question on the first reading. We still have another three, Mister Blackwell.
Be clear, if council wants to follow uh the suggestion of Mister Chirkoff. Uh there could be an amendment by councillor Conlon, if she is so minded, or friendly amendment, I guess, by anybody else. To break this into simply the tax rate versus the entire uh twenty twenty five budget. So right now, it's the whole budget that's before you.
Mm hmm, yeah.
I I fundamentally have a problem with deciding what the tax rate is before you finalize the budget, I just feel there's always the last thing you should do. Finish your budget cycle, then decide what your tax rate is, deciding what your tax rate's gonna increase is gonna be, or the tax rate's gonna be now. Before you complete the budget cycle, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And to the the urgency, yes, we like to try to do it earlier, some big municipalities do do it by the end of the year or early in January. Um most municipalities don't, and the tax rate part of it, you don't need for a long time because the utilities are going first. The tax rate's not, you know, that increase, that um bill is not going out for the longest time. So I don't, I don't see the need in picking the tax rate until, yeah, match it our way through the budget.
Okay, Mister Blackwell, if we do the first reading, we've got another three readings to make adjustments.
You do.
Okay, I'll call a question on the first reading, others in favor of the first reading? Okay, opposed? Okay, motion carries, we've got three more readings to go, Mister Chirkoff, please line up those two meetings. And back to council, thank you. Okay, the next item, I believe, is the calendar. Wow. Uh, okay. Why don't we take a two minute break, uh just the calendar, I think we'll need Mr. Blackwell just. Oh, you know, go ahead, Mr. Blackwell. All right, we've got the calendar, I think um. I believe you had changed last time or asked to uh change the infrastructure means to Tuesday, so I think it's still on there as Thursdays.
Yeah.
No one had a problem with changing it to Tuesday.
To the chair.
Yeah.
Uh, my apologies, I didn't realize you ordered it Tuesday, and I thought it was just the alternating Thursday in between.
That was my original suggestion, and then I said Tuesday, and then I spoke, you could have said it on Tuesday. So maybe I'm, let me just do this, I can't remember, kind of distorted, maybe, maybe I'm getting misinformation. I've also had a CAC meeting since, and I've asked them to move to Tuesday, and they've agreed. So if that works and everyone's in agreement, that would mean we have first Tuesday, a committee of the whole, second Tuesday would be the um infrastructure, first Tuesday, career, or second Tuesday, infrastructure, third Tuesday would be the vehicle council meeting, and fourth Tuesday would be the um climate action committee meeting, and for some of us, that means we don't have to try to get it on Tuesday, the weekends. So.
Which is the challenge.
It's just sometimes a challenge.
All right.
So that's what I'd like to suggest.
Move the audit and finance committee, report the infrastructure committee. The hour and a half before that.
Yep, that's and no set dates.
Uh, just put it.
But that it might happen prior to the infrastructure.
Yeah. And just pencil in the date for Thursday, so that we've got the room button, and if we don't need it, we'll let you know. Thanks. Okay, any other? Sorry.
No, it's Tuesday.
Yes. Any other major items on there, we can always change this.
There is, there's gonna be one conflict with the UBCN, but I think we can probably just deal with the person.
Yeah, no.
Uh. Second. All right, motion to accept the calendar with the changes.
Yes.
Okay, opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Blackwell, would you change the calendar year to show up in the office at five thirty this morning?
I'm already there.
Okay, uh, we'll move to item number six point one point.
You know, after work Saturday, it's Sunday when they fall Friday.
Item six point one point five. And that is the drinking water inspection report for information state. Expressions, comments.
We we, dear, were you gonna present to us and speak us through?
Uh, well, thanks, I wasn't gonna speak uh anymore than you see in front of you, other than to say um, the the inspection went well. I I would say that as a result of a fairly assiduous, meticulous, thorough um plant operator, we we are in pretty good odor at the water regulator, and so they pretty much tend to come and s- and and see for interest. Um, we often get something new out of the, out of the uh visits, and we did in this case as well, technical stuff. But um the 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 visit went well. Um, there was nothing untoward, as you see in the report, uh all aspects were were identified as low risk. So that's as good a result as you can hope from a water regulator visit, annual visit.
All right, any questions for Mr. Burke?
Um. I had a few, I could maybe keep them for discussion of the IC, I guess, is that more appropriate to the?
Sure, I mean, you know, it's something public might value hearing about how.
Well, I think, I think. Yeah, from the public point of view, maybe you could just expand on, so we had this issue with that mag um with the um with the tubidity, um, and then we've got various plans in place to um for early detection and more valvings and control that. Um. If, sorry, we had the problem with Harvey the last time, it was Harvey that made.
Right, Councilor Abbott.
Yeah. So.
Let them.
Don't get technical.
Don't get, don't get technical.
We've got some things.
I suggest, yeah, people that maybe understand the options and can the village level one tank or not the other? Where are we at now? When do we get to that point? Because I've had that question from a lot of people, and it's not, it's not quite clear, isn't it not clear? It's, I think that's a question, maybe you could just clear up and.
Yeah, so um, you know, uh, in in regular operation, as we do today, we 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 often go one to one plant um either, uh especially when there's adequate supply, as now, for example. Um, if we're on the mag side, it's not the the pressure in a few places in the village is not as great as it should be, but it's adequate.
Could we just clarify what mag?
Magnesia, magnesium.
The magnesium, yeah, fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I we know, but you know, I think.
Yeah, so we have these two plants, mag and Harvey, so uh we can run on either. Uh, we we ran most of last week on Harvey, for example, because the mag intake was so low with leaves. Um, we have a safety protocol that we don't allow out there, if it's running too hard for too long, so uh we were within a unfortunate situation. So the answer to the question is yes, in terms of a more longer term solution, uh not yet. Our consumption is still too high specifically in some.
Okay, any other questions, Councilor Abbott?
Um, what's in the bag of goodies?
Well, I'm glad you asked me that. Uh, uh, this uh was a result of today's flushing exercise at the hydrant, right outside the one I'm putting at. This is the hydrant that's close to the end of the one point three billion dollar budget request for Cub Dove Three, the water main replacement from Alberta Creek down to the same fire. When you flush at fly fire flow rates, meaning what what we would expect to see coming out of that hydrant uh in the event of a fire, this is what comes out. Um, these are iron.
They're not.
I thought they were like chocolate covered. Like berries.
It would increase your iron. You'd never be short of iron again.
Those are pieces. All right, folks, through the chair, please. All right.
So, so um it's a little after the fact, but uh that that project is now demonstrated as vital. I could also speak to the flow rates that we measured coming out of the hydrant today during flushing program, they're inadequate. That project has to be done. Um, funded by tax, funded by reserves, funded by anything else.
Mr. Blackwell, just your hand up.
Just a favorite point on that inadequate with regard to fire flows. So it would appear that I, you know, spitballing a number, I'm fifty fifty to sixty percent of the flow was coming out of that one hydrant, which.
I think that might be optimistic in terms of what it should be.
So that's what a fire truck would connect to in order to be able to pump. The the truck provides the pressure, the hydro provides the water, there's insufficient water coming out to to be sure that we can.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just to, not not to scare anybody, but these things obviously can't go through a fire truck. Um, the screen on the fire truck in it would get, would get blasted out by these things. So they wouldn't actually be able to fight a fire using the two hydrants that these came out of, right down here, I'm pointing to where they are. Um, and we have, we have a few more like that.
How often are you flushing that?
Twice a year.
With that resulting in flushing it more than the last year now?
This is about a year's worth, because we didn't flush those ones all the way through. I'll also point out those two hydrants also serviced about four months ago, and similar amount of stuff came up. I was a point out that this is iron, that's what the pipeline's made of, and it's coming from somewhere, it's it's writing the pipeline.
And how about the other pipes in the village, have you flushed those and are you getting?
Well, we, the flushing programs are underway, uh we've got two more days to go. Um, most of the other mains in the village are ductile iron, they don't do this. This is cast iron, it rusts. Uh, because of the, councillor Abbott mentioned that asbestos cement, but that's definition. Um.
Is that an asbestos pipe?
No, cast iron.
Okay, and the asbestos ones, are they shedding?
No, no, we test for asbestos quarterly and and the the asbestos tests we just had showed effectively no asbestos in the water. And and we do it both for health reasons, although Health Canada doesn't actually have asbestos guidelines, but the US EPA does. But we actually also do it to see if the, if the line is sloughing, which it is not. So that's, AC is in in remarkable good shape.
But they have other risks, and that, but they have other risks and concerns, which you cannot see. Kel we experienced a few months back, could have the same situation here, because they go, they break from the outside.
Yeah. Yeah, they they bring.
Mr. Blackwell, if if uh one of these breaks, is that what you're referring to, the financial sustainability?
That's correct.
Yeah. So we can address that perhaps in the new year as well, some of these meetings.
Yeah, I think it'd be very, very prudent for this council to facilitate a discussion around what financial sustainability can look like. There aren't many options, but I think it's wise and timely for council to start contemplating what options might be on the table to sort of knock down the risk a little bit or increase cash flow or otherwise get on a more stable financial plan.
Okay, uh, councillor Brutton, you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I'd I'd like to make a motion um of appreciation to the works crew for an outstanding report, outstanding outcome. So.
Hey.
Could I make that motion?
Sure.
All right, all in favor?
A big round of.
Thank you. Thank you, and I'll pass on yours.
You have our.
We'll wait till it's approved.
Mr. Burke, thank you very much, and it sounds like we'll be discussing that more in in the new year, so thank you.
If you will, you stop taking names, I am Ted, the doctor told you, you didn't play it.
If you have the right place.
It looks like.
All right, on item six point one point six and respect workplace training, and we'll move it over to our CEO, Mr. Blackwell, any comments?
Uh, this is just simply for council's information, so council knows that uh this is annual staff training process. It's sort of informed by uh works A P C. So to let you know that we are doing this, if council is so minded, I can also include council in in this workshop training, if you're so minded, but it's there just for your permission, so you know that staff is involved in doing this.
Okay, um, I'd be interested in attending.
If if anyone that's interested, I would like to just shoot me an email.
Okay. All right, any questions? Um, okay, we'll move to six two, there is uh no committee uh reports, uh six point three, nothing from the American Council, six point four, uh, yeah.
I apologize to council, uh, we have a matter that slipped off the agenda to make it on um based on before you are information, I consider our C and P reports for, as you see, July, August, November, October. Our fire chief is here to do the same thing, although we didn't get included on the agenda, if council would like to hear from him. It's here to provide the fourth quarter update.
Okay, um, I'm fine with that, councillors?
Sure.
Absolutely. Okay. Chief, what are you?
Yeah, just a quick um uh update on the call volumes that we've been having. Uh, this is just for the third quarter, well, fourth quarter, sorry. Uh, in total, uh twenty seven callouts, emergency callouts, uh consisting of fourteen medical calls, uh seven car accidents, five alarms, and one hydro, uh hydro pole fire. That's uh, that's it for the last three months, or two and a half, no? And we're currently on par for about a hundred and thirty calls this year, which is average.
Average?
Yeah, for us, yeah. They've changed a little bit, uh we're seeing a rise in our, they call them Mesa calls, medical emergency service assists on medical calls. Those are going up on this last quarter, and the car accidents have actually gone down. Why, I don't know, right? Uh, you got uh, you get a lot of repeat customers and as people's health go up, calls go up.
Cool, does the car accidents go down by a noticeable percentage? Because I'm, I think you're all surprised, but I'm surprised by that.
Yeah, uh, last year, uh, the car accidents exceeded our medical calls.
Councilor Abbott.
And this here.
To the chair.
Oh, sorry. Uh, the um uh, this last quarter, uh having the the car accidents being down at seven and our medical calls being up, uh, that's out of ordinary as compared to last year.
Any update on the fire smart initiatives?
Uh, not a whole heck of a lot has been going on right now. I have been in contact with our uh fire smart coordinator through Fromterra. Uh, and they're coordinating some uh tree and brush and fire, uh critical infrastructure uh fire smart, so they'll be out, uh, they're supposed to be there here this month, trimming up some trees around this building as well.
Uh, when they trim the trees, do they reach out to the staff, uh, the works yards to discuss trimming along the the roadways and and such?
So they did an assessment of uh where was needed, where the money that's in the ground could best be spent. Uh, they come out and they look around the buildings, they look around here. Uh, there's a little bit of an issue with um cutting trees close to a creek in that, there's different um parameters that have to be met with that. Uh, so I guess to answer your question, we haven't uh coordinated with staff at the works yard with uh which tree or which road, but in answering this question, we're not cutting trees by the uh roads in general. It's around the buildings, it's uh around. Well, this will.
Um, will we hear from the fire smart representative somewhere along the way?
Um, yeah, as we start rolling into to spring lamp of the uh the fire smarting uh public consultation, we're in council consultation, we can bring them in at any time, anytime they want to.
Okay, great, uh, councillor Brutton, you have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, two things, one, um is, it it, you said it's a a minor increase in the in the medical calls, but but it's more a decrease in the, in in the uh uh car accident calls. So, um, but, oh, anyway, sorry, the the point I'm trying to get to is, is the ambulance uh out of the village more now than it has been in the past? Uh, there has been some concern expressed that that the the ambulance is being called to do backup. It's, you know, West Vancouver gets swamped, so if they pull our ambulance, does that then cause more calls to our fire department?
No, um, the uh, the, when fire gets called to go to the medical calls, it's
Anyway.
It's with with ambulance, it's not one or the other, so. Um, the only exception being if there's a uh the the report to dispatch to nine one one is of a a simple and uh situation where we just need to help somebody up on the ground that's, you know, uninjured but just can't get up, then we'll be dispatched just as the fire department, not needing an ambulance, uh, because there's no potential transport in this and that.
Right.
Um. Ambulants, they do, they do ship, uh maybe a discussion with the the unit chief and that to explain how everything goes. But uh, my experience with it is, being provincial, it's not technically our ambulance. They're based here, they rent a uh, they rent the the space, but it's not our ambulance, and they ship up and down wherever the fall volume goes. So, and then they have different parameters for staffing and that sort of stuff. So it's not that they're not here, so we have to go, we're going as well.
Okay, well, that, I just, sometimes that that can be a perception, so I really don't have to clarify. Yeah, the second point?
Mm hmm.
Okay, Susan. Um, I I shared a fire smart article from C C B C, and uh it was a report that was done after the Florida fire. And it was quite, it's it's pregnant, I shared with council and and fire chief and and D S S. And uh it was quite interesting because they they looked at the houses that burned down and looked at the house, just that for some reason, we're still standing. And what what were the common factors between those? And it appeared to me that it was really just good, strong fire smart principles in terms of uh firewood away from the house, uh cleaning the gutters, all all the fire smart things, trimming back around the house. And and it literally made the difference between a house standing and a house gone.
It does, and uh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, councillor Abbott.
Well, I, before you answer that, I read the same article, surprising how people come away with different takes. For me, the most astounding thing was non combustible building materials was by far the biggest thing. And the discussion, discussion in that article is that fires do not move from tree to tree. They go through embers flying from kilometers away, which is kind of what has become common practice, and that for me was the big takeaway. And really, what you need to do is make sure you've got a metal roof over your head or something else that's stopping or stopping stuff we've been exposed to embers raining out of the sky. It's very clear, they do not, they showed that it wasn't from tree to tree, and that's why you'd see a house survive versus a house that burned, because one house has got something stopping, the city house light, and the house next door did.
Yeah, okay, if you've got a question, that'd be great, if there are comments.
Yeah, we all.
I think we've read definitely that in terms of, the, I think the embers are 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 the big issue here. Uh, just a very quick point, uh, the fire on West Forty First Avenue next to the Save On Foods over at. over at Dunbar, recently there's an apartment fired in the summer, and a house burned down both block and two blocks away as a result of embers flying and landing on, on a brand new house, and literally burnt it to the ground, so. Anyway, uh, just applauding your Fire Smart work, thank you.
All right, Chief, thank you very much, appreciate everything you do for the community. Okay, with that, we'll move to receive the R C M P report, uh, that's six point four one and six point four two. Any comments?
You, you don't need to move it.
No, okay. Any comments? Oh, good, okay, uh, we'll move to uh, item number eight, bylaws eight point one, uh, water bylaw number six, three, three, twenty twenty five, second reading, do we have a motion?
Yep.
Okay, moved by Council Abbott, seconded by Council Brown, discussion.
I've got a few. Is someone else wants to go first?
Go ahead, Council out.
Okay, um. Could I put a recommendation that the directive operation just joins us, so you can take some notes, cause I think this is his.
Yeah, Mr. Burr.
Okay. Yeah, so thanks for the changes you made already, which is some suggested, I suggested the next one, but I've got a few more, cause I read it again. Um, item eight, part three, item eight.
Sorry, what page is that?
It's on page one hundred and thirty five of the agenda page. And this is the part that says no personal shelter needs armor in any manner, bury, cover, obstruct, access, and there's a long explanation. I think we put in to put in front of that without prior approval from the municipality, because I think we have a lot in Grandfather approved situations. And that could make it uh, somewhat awkward.
Okay, thank you, through the chair, yeah, good point, uh, I probably also need to address existing situations.
If you put that in there, then at least someone could say, I have an approval for that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, number item nine, just below that, um, this is the part where um municipality has certain ways to um, correct a situation. Um, you've got to remove any obstruction, reinstate the curb stop, declare the curb stop, and install a new curb, so declare the curb stop lost and install a new one. I think if we could add a third one there, which we, would be to relocate, relocate the supply line to the curb um, stop away from the object at the owner's expense, cause I think we have um, situations where, where the curb stop is, is not where you want to go back into, you, you, you showed me one, one day. So if the owner had the option then to pay to relocate the pipeline to a more suitable accessible place, um, otherwise it might be, this could be very cost prohibitive situation that.
Yeah, I saw if I can, if I can through the chair point out what the issue is here, especially if the property is uphill. What ends up happening is the retaining wall gets built on the property line, the curb stop is also on the property line, there's a reason for that. So that there's no encroachment of either party in either direction. If the municipal curb stop is on private property, we need an encroachment so that we can go in and fix our piece of the line. And if the curb stops on, on private property, the, the private owner needs an easement so that it can fix his part of the line. So you typically want to put curb stop right on the property line. Meaning if you're moving the service lines and you can move the curb stop, uh, where do you put it? Because uh, you can, you can move it naturally, but it still has to go on the proxy line, which often, especially in the case of uphill proxies, there's a retaining wall on it now, we see there's a lot of carbon growth enabled, because it's so steep. So it's a challenge, uh, how you actually end up doing this. Especially when you get to the point of, of needing to put in a metering pit or uh, a different service line. So for example, as you know, when, when we do more than fifty percent construction in a renovation, it's new construction needs sprinkling, which requires a one and a half inch line, and the question often is, where do we put the thing? So.
So you've had a third option allowed, and you can make it the owner's expense, that you're allowed for relocation to another area that works better for both.
Mr. Blackwell?
Yeah.
And is this a proper process to change these on the fly, or?
It's a second reading, and uh, so it's been, th- this is what's coming out of the reading.
So yeah, it's important to get the feedback, um, and it's a bit of a chicken and egg, depending on how many revisions, what works really well is that these revisions are put on the table and that second reading of the bylaw as amended, we considered. Uh, cause now if you've got second reading on the table, now you're making all these amendments to it, they won't come forward till third reading. I mean, these are, these are relatively minor nuances, but it's sort of good to get all these nicely organized. Um, if council is so minded, that with these, uh, to, to approve these recommended changes uh, and consider these cha-changes in the context of their reading, that's fine, it's, it's a little fuzzy, but it still works.
Okay, how many changes are you contemplating here?
I've got, uh.
Many more than that, next time we perhaps reach out to the staff, make the changes ahead of time, so everyone can see them in advance.
Sure, I'll go quick, I don't think you'll take this one. Um, this one, just a question, um, it came to on the other, so we, we still allow copper pipe. But I never sold a, a copper pipe, or solder has the same North American ease um, in the longest time, so does modern solder not have leadiness, or are we allowing that situation to get worse?
Use compression fittings.
Those copper pipes with compression fittings on.
Yeah, we don't solder on the municipal side.
But on the private side.
We don't have any say in that, if it meets plumbing code.
No, but you've suggested here that people put the connections in, they must use, and we listed all the materials last time. We, we sorted out the plastic one, and we allow copper. So we're allowing people to, we should have, so we're allowing people to do that, and they're not harming themselves, which is not a good thing, fine.
They typically use compression.
I think they would all use compression fittings, yeah, okay, um. Yeah, there was one I suggested last time that didn't get changed, I'll, I'll leave it, I'll ask you explanation why.
I mean, if I may through the chair, it might make it easier, is, is unless any of these are, are in, in any way going to be contentious, which I don't think so, perhaps we can discuss them offline, and I can put them in the third reading version.
We could discuss those two that are from the last time offline, and I, I've only got two others, and I'll go really quickly. Um, and I think maybe this is something we should consider, so, um, number thirty six. Penalties may be issued each can they will park there on if the fence occurs, and above that, you say the penalties could be from two hundred to twenty thousand. Um, I think the intention is in number thirty six that the maximum should still be twenty thousand, can issue, not suggesting issuing someone twenty thousand dollars penalty per day.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is somewhere between uh, the charter and, and common law, um. There's no provision in the bylaw, in, in the uh, bylaw enforcement provisions of the bylaw, that have a twenty thousand dollar fine. There, there isn't, two thousand dollar fine, but um, the, the, the standard is that the fence reoccurs daily, and, and the idea is that you don't just pay a one-time fee and then say, I'm good, it's of, of double jeopardy. So, yeah, the, the twenty thousand, I believe, is sort of a B C stature, um, there's no provision for, that's, that's your black ball.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Burr, I think, and maybe Dodge might, might be able to provide clarity if he's had his notes in the books, but it used to be ten thousand dollars was the maximum permissible for municipality to, to charge. Not sure if it's still that amount.
Well, this will have come from the, from.
Yes, it's going up to twenty. Well, I, I would assume by this, but my point is, is it, it's twenty in total, you cannot charge twenty per day, and it's not the way it reads. So I think the re, the vision should just be in the number thirty six.
I'll, I'll check that.
Uh, to a maximum of twenty thousand dollars, at the end of it.
Uh, Mr. Burr, I think I asked, uh, at the last, um, council meeting, if you could give us some comparables, just to I, I know you asked for input on these fines, uh, but quite honestly, unless I see some comparables, it's difficult. Um, and I just pulled up the parking ticket as an example, I, I know we get lots of complaints, and it seems to be at the high end. Would be nice to know these lists of fines, if we're high, medium, low.
Y- yes, uh, and we did that report, in fact, by law enforcement officer Bindra wrote the report this morning, uh, which you received on table.
Okay.
So, the, the issue there is, uh, um, I was kind of interested to see what other people were doing as well, um. Many of the provisions that we're making here are, are new, you know, they speak to things that, that uh don't really come across your average community's radar, like for example, power generation or one-time uses. So the fines that I'm proposing are set on, based on what I know is going to cost us to fix it, remediate it, and the severity of the offense, if you are doing something as egregious as making power inside your premise uh, using our high-pressure water, and you get found out, y-you're going to pay. Um, and hopefully you pay so much that you never do again, similar to the argument that we use when you cut down a, a tree, the, the fine is six thousand dollars. It's to discourage you from doing something that is known to be not allowed.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Two points just for clarification, whatever that upset amount is stipulated by the statute. So if it is ten thousand, let's say, municipality would charge that every day, up to any amount it chooses. Uh, you don't have to set them a maximum, but municipalities can, the other thing is this is not one of those things that you can apply to property taxes, so it's one thing to charge these issue these tickets. Just so you know.
What do you mean by that? That they'll end in legal suits?
It is, well, I mean, somebody could just say, I'm not going to pay.
Well, if I may, uh, the, the bylaw specifically says at the behest of council, legal council, not statutory council, that they are treated as property taxes in arrest, so that's not kosher. Uh, I obviously need to look at that.
Mr. Blackwell.
Yeah, maybe, Mr. Burr and I can just double check on that, um. Because otherwise, all, what it is, is uh, it's, you have to make an application to court to, to to realize these funds, and that's expensive to do. Oftentimes, the, the court application is more than actually takeable about.
Council.
My, my point of this twenty thousand, why I thought it should say to you maximum up to twenty thousand in the post thirty six day, is because this circumstance here is someone's got a defective water system and he has to fix it. And you can ding him up to twenty thousand dollars if he's being retaliated about doing it. But if he's trying to find a contract and get someone out there, I mean, twenty thousand a day, you can't, but it's just, no one can, no one's going to turn that around in a day.
But if I may, there, there is no fine of twenty thousand dollars, the, the fines for the kind of thing that you're talking about, the proposed fines are two hundred dollars.
It says, yeah, this is two hundred to twenty thousand.
Yeah, the best.
Anyway, so we, we, you can charge two hundred up to a maximum of twenty thousand, that would clear it up for me, it's all.
Dodge, did you want to join the conversation?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I would have to look into how much we can, the maximum we can charge. Um, and also my I was under the impression that it would be, we would be able to charge it to property taxes. But again, that's also something we look into.
If I may through the chair, we can nail that piece down quite easily, um. So that there is no dispute about what we, we do and don't penalize, a- and the hope is that there's never a need to penalize, uh, that you know, we, we, we don't immediately issue a ticket, we actually try and work with uh, property owners to, to remediate a situation, except when it is egregious, um. And sometimes that doesn't work, uh, we have uh, one situation right now where the homeowner, he refuses to accept that they have a leak. And I actually have no legal remedy right now, um, to, to induce them to fix it. This water bylaw would allow that, and the, and the fines are set up, so that's why we're doing this, is to give public works the, the powers it needs to, to fix a now sixty-year-old system, the old water bylaw, number two, uh, spoke pretty much how you connect it to the water system, it was cause everybody was connecting, brand-new system, brand-new water services, there was no real consideration of what would it take to fix the thing, because nobody needed to fix it. That was sixty years ago, now we need to, now we need provisions for that, so, um. That's what you see in front of us.
Okay, um, I haven't looked at the on-table item, but will there be a comparison where we can find them?
No, no, as I said, there's, the, the, the higher fines, these, what I call egregious behaviors of power generation, what's recouling, that kind of thing. We haven't found any, anybody calling out stuff like that. Um, and yet we know it happens, um, does it happen in life, babe? No idea, certainly hope not.
Okay, any comments? Okay, I'll call a question on the second reading.
Would that include the amendments that we just discussed?
Uh, if they're separate on, on this agenda.
Yeah, firstly, I wouldn't propose, uh, on, on table amendments, I would suggest, uh, give second reading to what you see here, it's a second reading, go. Uh, and I will take it as a nod that we put those comments in the third reading. Which if you see in my report, I believe is due for the first reading agenda.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell, uh, these are two separate decisions on eight point one and eight point one one.
Correct.
Okay, so, for eight point one, all in favor?
So, just asking, eight point one is what?
Eight point one is the bylaw number six.
Yes.
Second reading.
Thank you.
Second, all in favor?
Yes.
Oh, motion carried, okay, eight point one point one, bylaw notice, uh, enforcement bylaw six forty, twenty twenty four amendment. Uh, do we have a motion for that?
Okay, hold.
Okay, second. I'll second it, okay, discussion.
Thanks, so, uh, this one is, is the only uh, line item in any municipal budget that contains the word bylaw five times. Um, which is unique in itself, always like saying that, uh, when it comes up. Um, so you are now looking at first and second reading to catch up with the second reading you've just given to the water bylaw of the our funds, not fees, fines, um, that are associated with some of the penalizable actions in the water bylaw. You will recall that, uh, we took the opportunity, because we were going to be amending this thing anyway, to amend some obvious ones that are marked up in the copy, um. We're looking for first and second reading on the amendment bylaw, that, that will affect the marked up changes that you see in schedule A to the original bylaw.
Hey, any questions?
So this is one of the, the catch-up ones. Why, why did we strike, so this is on app page one seventy-three, which you're looking at, this is one under the trees. Why, why did we strike the fine to cut a tree without a pin?
Because it was covered, uh, through the chair, because, uh, because it was covered, uh, under the later penalizable offense of poisoning a tree, damaging a tree, et cetera, et cetera. Damaging a tree was, i- i- the definition in the bylaw is, is broader than, um, cutting a tree.
Tree damaging activities.
In the tree bylaws specifically.
Okay, then we added a whole lot. Sabotaging a tree, okay.
Yeah, so if I may, those are contained in the bylaw and defined as penalizable offenses, but no fine established.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, sorry, uh, the fine is established, and it's those very high numbers, uh, which are intended to be a deterrent uh, to not just doing it anyway, uh, and it's to update the fees by law. Which was, which was.
Um, I said it before, I'm good with that, I was wondering about whether one was struck, well, it makes sense, okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of the first and second reading? Oh, the question carried. Okay, thank you, Mr. Burr. Okay, eight point two, noise bylaw, number six, three, eight, twenty twenty four amendment, the motion. Do we have a motion? Okay, Council come up, has moved that second?
Second.
Council Brown, comments? Now, Mr. Blackwell?
Did you want a brief presentation for staff? Please.
Uh, yeah. Thank you.
So the amendment to the noise control bylaw is uh what we're wanting to do is to allow for sound to be produced within the broad, broadened hall in the course of the performance of vocal or instrumental music, the performance of a clay dance or other theatrical production, or the conduct of a meeting, gathering, or assembly during the hours of eight AM to midnight. Um so basically, talk about the why, uh middle, accommodate for a broad uh for a broader range of activities without the need for frequent bylaw relaxation requests. This in turn will increase the usage of the hall and enhance revenue potential uh from the hall. That's the the main concept behind why we wanna include the broad hall as a exemption for noise, basically.
Okay. Right, any questions, Counselor Kama?
I have a comment. So increasing revenue from the hall when we rent it to residents for twenty-five dollars is really not a factor for me. The concern that I would have is that we get now somebody coming from outside of the village. Who knows, they have the hall until midnight and can start having parties, which we saw happen frequently at a home down on Lions Bay Avenue that were advertised on Eventbrite. And people coming from out of the community to have late-night rave parties. So without somebody coming in and coming to council or requesting, I could see that I'd get the idea behind it, so somebody in the community who's putting things on doesn't have to come. But it happens so infrequently that I would be really uncomfortable, kind of carte blanche, putting forward this bylaw amendment to allow the potential that every Friday, Saturday night, or maybe every night all summer long, we have a different group that is hosting parties in the close proximity to especially the condos where there's a lot of families that live there, a lot of senior people, and I think that they would be potentially really negatively impacted. So.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Just just a bit more information for council on this. If council was minded to proceed with this, for your efficiency reasons, if it ended up being that that it became problematic, council always has the latitude to direct staff to amend it. Then remove that amendment. So it's a question of, do you sort of make, facilitate a more flexible approach? And see how it goes, and if it doesn't work out, you change it? Or do you guard against what might be the case and reduce the efficiency for people? That's
If uh someone was to book it and you found out that they were running a rave or or advertising all across town, is is that something you can cancel prior to the event, or you locked in, or we locked in?
Uh well, I I think the principle is you can't presume. And conduct your actions accordingly, you can only respond. It is considered unfair and biased and so on. So it would be after the fact, or while it was happening, you would respond. But you you know, you can't look at an application and say, and I don't think any applicant's gonna write on there, you know, go crazy and tell to block in the morning, sort of thing, so. Or, you know, rave dot com is the applicant. So it's, it would be very hard to sort of predict somebody that might go fast.
Fair enough. Counselor Abbott?
We would, Jamie said, made a call on a sentence, and I would, I have that same concern. Uh I I think it will, could be getting abused very rapidly, very quickly, also, you know, social media, media spreads, spreads ideas that some might think are good ideas, and we won't think so. Um rental of a hallway outside the residence is a hundred and twenty bucks or something, that's not a deterrent at all, and that's not, even, that's not revenue. I think very few of these actually come to council, we don't have to deal with these too many times. There are two circumstances where people, um there might have been one third that was gonna do, but didn't do it, where people have multiple requests in a year, and I think we've discussed at council how to resolve those. Um we've granted sort of an annual no more offer man type permit before, and I think that's what we should do to accommodate those ones. So they don't have to keep coming, uh those those two entities, really, that's the house concerts and uh what happens down at at the cafe. So I think we can accommodate those and and discuss that. I think that's probably a better suggestion as to how to improve this. Um but but other than that, I I I I'm concerned this is, you know, this is opening a door that more than a toe is gonna come through and we'll leave it at that.
Sorry, Counselor Brown, any question?
I don't, I don't think it's, I think it's a good su- good suggestion. I do have some concerns of of outside people coming in. And I think it could get some momentum before we, before we were able to close it down. Uh I I don't get, my impression is not that there's been a a huge number of of uh decisions that council has had to make with regard to this, so. I I I don't think it's, I I think it's very well-meaning, but I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, we call the question, all in favor? Those opposed?
Puts.
Okay, motion defeated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh item eight point three, uh do we have motion on bylaw number six three nine? Sorry.
Sorry, I just brought up the application form, and it can actually be canceled at any time.
All right, um well, we've voted it down, but if it comes before us again, thank you. Okay, uh do we have motion on the garbage and recycling bylaw six three nine, twenty twenty-four amendment? Motion. Okay, moved by Counselor Brown, seconded. Seconded by Counselor Kama, okay, discussion? Yes.
Just wanna draw your attention or remind council that you see two pieces correspondence today on uh this bylaw before you. Um in summary, both of those are another favorite bylaw, uh both of those are advocating for reliance on the uh, which of you said, the uh, the staggered pickup time? Scheduled, yeah. And so I just wanted to remind council.
Okay, I didn't see those, but any comments uh on the bylaw itself?
Yeah.
Hi, thank you.
So this stems from complaints we've been getting from residents regarding the collection schedule. Um and so along with that, we're trying to eliminate the confusion of what's considered low and increased wildlife activity. After a conversation with uh BC Conservation Office, they say wildlife activity is continuously changing. It's not the same every year. Um some years bears are staying there longer than others. Um and the other issue is, we wanna develop impartiality by ensuring all residents can easily adhere to the garbage collection schedule. For example, someone that's living in Brunswick Beach has to wait till ten AM for them to put out their garbage on a weekday, could be a working weekday compared to someone that's um living the Bayview area, which they are able to put out their garbage by seven thirty. So there's a bit of um unfairness when it comes to making it difficult for people to put out their garbage at certain times and uh any fines that are associated with it. It's difficult to find someone when it comes to not adhering to these, the schedule, because it's it it's not reasonable for someone to have to wait till ten AM to put out their garbage for someone that's um could be working. It's also, I feel like it's not reasonable for someone to be expected to have the ability to to drop off their garbage at the public works yard, um whether it's your elderly or whether whether you have the um vehicle to to drop it off. Uh and so because of that, we'd like to um make a amendment to remove the distinction of low and uh increased wildlife. We're also, we compared with our neighboring Bear Smart community, which is Squamish. And Squamish does not have this low and they do not have that distinction, they just have a clear set out um similar to ours, which is five, um not having it out before five AM of the collection date, and they have seven PM uh removal on the same day. Um and so going off of a community that's also Bear Smart, I think it would be uh beneficial to remove um this collection schedule that we have set out here.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh any comments from councils, Counselor Abbott?
A lot of comments, probably more than we can unpack here tonight.
Well, uh let's try to keep in a a reasonable time, usually three to four minutes for counselor.
Okay, um we had a meeting in charge with the conservation office, we decided that we should remove um the timing to make it year-round. We didn't know, we agreed to leave the rest of the bylaw with the scheduled pickup for year-round. That's what was agreed in that meeting. This is the opposite, this has gone back to the bylaw from many years ago. Um it is very problematic, we know it, we've experienced in twenty twenty-two. Um I have looked at many, many bylaws and many municipalities, you only picked on one. Squamish and most of them provide their residents with bins. And in Squamish's case, the bigger the bin, the more you pay, not for the bin and every year. Um their curb time is seven forty-five, not five AM, and we checked that today again on the website, completely different circumstances. This is just, we should come and spoken to the best more committee, because we've been working on this for years, we could give you a lot more background information. This is fundamentally the wrong way to go for all magnitude of reasons. Um and it has the support of the vast majority of residents. I, there's, there's much more to unpack and explain, but I'll stop if I only have a couple.
Okay, Counselor Kama?
Yeah, I do agree that it can be owners trying to work under the constraints of the timing. Um I'm not in favor of going back to the way it was. I personally, my husband would put the garbage out before he'd leave to work, I'd go take the kids to school and I'd be home by eight forty and I'd be cleaning up garbage all over my cul-de-sac, because the crows managed to peck. It's not bears, it's wildlife, there's racers, squirrels, I just see this like being a mess. I would rather work with our provider to see if we could come up with a more rotating schedule. So not one neighborhood is locked into a ten AM. So it's a little more evenly distributed, because personally, I have a house with five people in it now, but I have six. And I could go for six weeks without putting garbage out. So if we looked at going to a weekly pickup with a rotating schedule, so there was equal fairness, I would be hard-pressed to see many people in this village needing to unload a lot of garbage every week. So I would rather work with them and scheduling than go back to, I mean, putting recycling out the night before. I can just imagine what the streets are gonna look like. So I'm, I'm sorry, I I just can't be in favor of that.
Okay, uh Mr. Blackwell, just a word about it, Counselor uh Brown hasn't spoke.
Just before, it's five AM.
The recycling or the?
All green waste, garbage, and recycling receptacles shall be placed for collection, you know, earlier than five AM.
Even at that.
Clean recycled products.
Okay, excuse me, Counselor Abbott, we're gonna go to Counselor Brown, Counselor Brown, have his hand up.
I am very, very supportive of the Bear Smart Committee, and despite the quote that Ms. Rogers made during the earlier presentation, which I would would really, uh I will at some point address, as I, as I, I think it, it does not indicate my, the degree of support that I have for Bear Smart. I don't have support for some tactics that that Bear Smart appears to be involved in, I'm not accusing Bear Smart of that, but but certainly residents have report uh some, some concerns about, about balance and uh creating hardship. So, you know, I I think that that Bear Smart, but what what I have attempted to do at different times is try to uh point out some blind spots perhaps that Bear Smart has. And uh that uh that sometimes enforcement can create more problems than it, than it resolves. I think that people are very, very supportive and willing, uh I think education is everything in this, in this. Uh I think you're gonna end up with a, you know, a s- a small percentage who aren't really cooperative with anything and and any amount of enforcement. But uh, you know, I just think that that uh we need to a lot less hammer and a lot more honey than vinegar, whatever the expression is. Um and and I just think that it's, uh you know, I think we we saw the passion in Ms. Rogers earlier this evening, and certainly see the passion in Counselor Abbott o- over time, and really value that, and really appreciate that. Doesn't mean I agree with everything. And so, but what what's has happened is if I have not agreed with something, um I've been been uh deemed to be in somewhere and anti. And I'm not anti-bears in any way, completely supportive, and have been for now almost five decades in this community.
Okay.
And I, and I have a myriad of stories and background, which I'd be delighted to share, but would not be appropriate in this time slot.
Okay, um I I've heard from many residents, it's difficult to to meet tho- that those time schedules, especially for those that have kids or are working. So I think we we need to be a little bit more flexible. I also agree with you that I think uh probably a little bit kinder outreach as opposed to you know, this, this, uh what I would say is a little bit less respectful than I think all of us would like to see, but so that's just my feedback. Counselor Abbott, your hand up.
Yeah, I just, as I said, I could respond to all of that, and there's, there's probably not enough time to know. I just wanna mention, when I mentioned earlier about the type of receptacle we put out, and the municipalities that you Northland, Squamish, they all provide those to residents. Now, first look at that, you're gonna find half a million dollars for us to be able to do that in one's way. And all of those municipalities, um that's part of the reason why they're able to be more flexible. So just and um.
Dodge has his hand up there, do you wanna hear from him, and then you can continue on, Counselor Abbott, I think you wanted to respond to that question.
Um so the biggest issue here is this bylaw is not enforceable. And there's a few points to that. Number one, there's no, there is no fine set out for not following the collection uh got uh collection schedule. There's a fine set out if your garbage is out before five AM or the previous day, but there isn't one for following or not following the collection schedule. Another point is that what is, there's no set grace period that we're giving them. We have a, we're giving, say, um one of them was from ten to eleven or something, so if someone can't put it out till ten, how much grace period are we giving them? And in a meeting, going back to a meeting we had uh with Counselor Abbott, mentioned that the schedule has um a thirty-minute grace period built in, however, that was not the case. There's a resident that scheduled pickup time was a separate ten o'clock, their garbage is picked up at ten oh six. Let's give them six minutes to put out their garbage. Otherwise, they're getting a fine. How is that enforceable? Otherwise, they're getting a fine, how is that enforceable?
Okay, Councillor Collins?
I think the solution is to work with waste collection on a rotating schedule, and yeah, it's not re- I don't know how many times I've heard the recycling truck in a random my driveway and have just missed it, and they're not forgiving. They're not kind and helpful. I, so I think we need to work on our relationship with them and create a little more equilibrium and fairness. And when Waste Control says they're gonna be in a neighborhood between ten and eleven, and they're exiting your street at ten oh one, that's not reasonable, and we should hold them accountable and make them come back and pick up what they miss. So I think that we need to put it on the collector, not the residents, because they don't do a fantastic job from.
Councillor, okay, thank you, Councillor Collins, Councillor Abbott, now we'll go to Mr. Blackwell.
As I said, there's a lot to unpack here, and when we started this, and we, best mod members had Waste Control Services on the call. Every time someone reported something like you just described on Facebook, and they turned the truck around and went and picked it up, every time with that exception, they will do it, they need to be notified. We got in first name terms with the dispatch, and it was like a daily thing, and then it got better and it settled down, and if it's going back, we have the means to direct them, they are all willing to turn around. We've, we've been through all of these things, there really is so much I could respond to everything that's been suggested here. I understand you're not enforceable partage, because we didn't do the fee schedule at the same time. Yeah, but that's not something in table in front of us, but that's what, if that's what we're doing, would be a different discussion. I think we should just call the question, because we know we've spent many, many meetings discussing this at this table, many, many hours, best more spend a lot more time, if you wanna have a more informal meeting with best mod, I wish that had happened and thrashed this out, maybe that's a way to do it, this, we can't stand behind, we should just call the question, it's a late night.
Could I, prior to calling the question, I, I think your comments about perhaps having a meeting and, and maybe open it up to the community and but I, I would take Councillor Collins, or Councillor Brown's comments to heart, is I think we've gotta be a little bit more caring and reach out to the community as opposed to reach out with a big hammer, because I, I just don't think that's good for anyone.
Yeah, sorry, can I just address that statement as well, there's so many things going on. Best mod does not do bylaw enforcement, this is Taj's job, we've never been on a single person's property. The one person that created the big issue where this started has nothing to do with best mod. I actually know what happened, someone self-reported to the bylaw officer, I know that for a fact, not Taj's previous bylaw officer. It is not, we do not direct them, this is just a complete fallacy, we don't have a hammer. Our, our communications is our job, and maybe some of the communications sounds, you know, a little dictatorial, we can have a look at that. We do not tell by, by what to enforce, that is not our job.
Mr. Blackwell?
Just a suggestion, given that I'm hearing the diversity of views around the table around this, suggestion to council would be to pass a resolution to table this to a committee in the whole for a more detailed discussion around these concerns and these options and so forth.
Okay, Councillor Brown?
I would make a motion to table this.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor of tabling this to a committee of the whole? Okay, opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed, I think you did defeat it, it's what's coming back to the committee of the whole?
Okay, it's, the vote is for, approved.
Sorry, I just want to put a word in. Can you table and bylaw amendment to a committee of the whole?
Yes, okay.
For discussion.
Motion carried on.
Can't vote on it. It's gonna come back like this.
Okay, motion carried, we'll move to correspondence, item nine point one. And Councillor Abbott, I believe that's yours? Any questions for correspondence for Councillor Abbott?
I have a motion.
Okay.
Okay. To do with correspondence?
Second, sorry, let me get there.
Said in regards to?
The wedding.
Yeah.
Somebody help me with the correspondence.
Okay.
What page are we on?
Page two oh eight, of two oh eight. It's a request to the chair?
Two twenty-eight.
Two twenty-eight on the old, on the first one.
Okay.
Two different versions, which is why we've been thumbing through.
Councillor Brown, motion.
Okay, there's, there's a.
I didn't realize if there was no correspondence tables, is this the correspondence, one item?
Yeah.
So there's a couple, I believe, but.
There's one.
This is, this is the one that requires action or, or would benefit from action. So Councillor Brown, if you'll give us a motion, and then we can have a discussion.
Okay, just quick, quick summation is that this is a request from the O'Dwyer family to rent the Calvin Grove parking lot next a year, almost a year from now, August the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in order to facilitate a home wedding. So I think while we, while we're not talking precedent, we, we said the previous issue would not set precedent. I think.
So that's a motion to rent the parking lot?
Is to, is to refer this to staff and with, with our support.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Seconded by Councillor Collins?
I can just see clarification on that, did I hear the motion that the, that.
State parking lot.
Be rented, rent on the parking lot.
On August the thirtieth, with the necessary restrictions or requirements as staff.
For the request.
There was a list of, I believe there's a list of the, the tradition, so, yeah.
So the, the recommendation is to follow what we said last time, do the same way. To a simple.
Okay, any other comments?
Without any precedent.
Is there a second, I'm sorry?
Yeah, it was the second time the Councillor Collins.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. No, my business.
If I could just draw your attention to the.
Yeah, I was gonna do that.
No, no, please, I was just gonna.
The resolutions for submissions, yeah. With the deadline, we've all got the deadline for resolutions to submissions. For the, for the government and government association, and, and then get approval, you can take that to U B C M, or as you all, you can go straight to U B C M, it's not advised. So yeah, I think we all need to think about that, and should be picking a date for a committee of the whole, or we bring back our suggestions and.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell?
Can I ask whether council would be inclined to resolve, to move that to a discussion item on a committee in the whole agenda?
Yeah, so I suppose, yeah.
Okay, a motion for that?
Motion.
Second, second, Councillor Collins, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Yeah. Beg the indulgence of council with this matter. The, I guess we feel council, I would receive the email today from the new elected representative for this, for this area, provincial representative.
Mr. Dilarion?
June. Who is wishing to sit down with council and have a meet and greet, wondering what council's preference is with regard to that, so I can respond to the email, is that something you'd like to do January? Is there a particular?
Did he, he suggested January or February, right? I'm open to that.
Yep.
Absolutely, is there any sort of days of the week that, do you care, is it day, evening?
Evening's gonna be better.
Evening's gonna be better.
Why don't you come with a couple of dates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Evening's better, sure.
Yeah.
I don't know if that individual is available, but I will see what I can do with it. So if I hear January or February.
Oh, I think that's what he suggested.
I think he's, he's back in January, because, because legislature's not sitting. If legislature's sitting, he's only, he's in Victoria on Monday through Thursday, he's only available on Friday, so we should do it probably not soon.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to council then.
Okay, we'll move right to public comments, hang on, gallery, we'll speak. Okay, we have motion to adjourn the meeting.
Before?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Collins, moved by Councillor Abbott, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Very much.
You all, have a good night. Taj and Chief, thank you for coming out, spending the whole evening with us.
Animals wanted to sign up as a volunteer, you was happy.